We'll now call the meeting in the Waco City Council on May 20th, 2025 to order at 3:02 PM. Welcome to the work session of the Waco City Council. Welcome everybody here today. Everybody that's here in the Boski Theater Gallery here today, thank you. And welcome to all the viewers at home watching on the Waco City Cable Channel. I appreciate you joining us this afternoon. I'm Mayor Jim Holmes. I'm joined on the dais here today by our newest city council member, Isabel Lozano over here. Let's hear it for Isabel. First council meeting. Great. We have Josh Borderood, Darius Ewing, George Chase, and our new mayor pro tem Andrea Bearfield is also with us. So full house here today. We're going to start the meeting day with a moment of silence. Okay, the first item of business is recognition of work session speakers. Acting City Secretary Spikes, is there anyone present who'd like to speak on a work agenda item?
There is not.
There's no, anybody else out here want to speak? There's none. We do have one handout from City Waco retiree Randy Elman, who I think everybody has his handout. He did not care to speak today, but we do have the handout. With that, we will move on to recessing the regular session and convening the work session with a report from City Manager Bradley Ford.
Thanks Mayor, and welcome to everybody. We've got no changes on the agenda today and just wanted to provide a special welcome to Councilmember Lozano. Excited to work with you and for you to be part of this team. I do have a couple of employee recognition items this evening. The first of which is a thank you to Chief Actorian and the team at Waco PD, as well as to our surrounding and supporting law enforcement agencies that coordinated last week the McLennan County Peace Officer Memorial Service to honor and pay tribute to peace officers from our county that have died in the line of duty. A special day each year that we get to do that and appreciate council members that were in attendance to honor those that have died. Additionally, in May...
That was a great ceremony. I love that. There's bagpipes and there's parades and flags. It's a really cool way to honor. I think there's 30 in McLennan County and it's a really neat ceremony. I encourage people next year to watch her fly over. Just a neat deal. Very windy that morning.
It was. May is, another item I wanted to highlight is May is Mental Health Awareness Month. We're about halfway through that. And in conjunction with that, earlier this month, I was proud that we at the city launched an internal organizational initiative called Total Wellbeing. And with a theme of it's okay to not be okay. City Council will remember in the past couple of budget years, we've invested in tools and resources for our employees' mental health. Our Employee Assistance Program, access to Armor Up America for all city employees, as well as reducing co-pays for mental health visits. Under the Total Wellbeing Program, we're really ramping up our communications to our employees with the hope that if they're in crisis, that they are able to seek the help and tools that they need to assist with their mental, emotional, and social well-being. So we'll have a complete person. I want to say special thanks to the team that put this together, helped pull it together from my office, Assistant City Manager Ryan Holt, Deidre Emerson, as well as Missy Piszowski, Monica Selmeyer, Chief Actorian, Interim Chief Ferguson, and Assistant Chief Vaselka from Fire, Ashley Nystrum, Dory Helm, Mari Hernandez, and Lisa Jones. All these team members stepped up to the plate and really helped to pull this together. One of the neat things, and you can follow it on the QR code there on the right-hand side or the bottom of the screen, is that part of the program, we sought city employees to tell their testimonies about accessing services when they needed it. And so if you follow that QR code, you can watch three or four videos from our employees that have been through difficult circumstances, accessed the services available to them, and came back to work for the City of Waco. And so we're really working to promote those stories and I'm real proud of the folks that did that. It was Deputy Chief Gary Lee in Fire, Police Commander Chet Long, Captain in Fire Department Philip Burnett, as well as an employee from Public Works, Charlotte Duran. Each of those employees stepped out and said, "I want to support this initiative by telling my story." So real proud of the work of those four people as well. We'll continue to highlight stories from employees as they're willing, just to help reduce the stigma around mental health. I think it's a great time in May to do that and talk about that. So appreciate the council's willingness to go along this journey with me and support our employees.
City Manager Ford, this is a great initiative. Grateful for you and your team stepping up to show how much both city management and the council cares about our employees and how, you know, since COVID, I think mental health issues have come out of the shadows a lot more and hopefully some of the stigma has also begun to evaporate. And with that, I think it's important for our people to seek help as soon as they begin feeling that way. And so this program really should begin to address that. Shows how much we care, but also connects them to resources immediately. So thank you for doing this. This is very important.
I'm going to echo my council member and show my gratitude that the City of Waco is intentional about caring for their whole staff. I laugh, you know, and say, "Check on your strong friends because we're not always okay." And the fact that we have made intentional strides to decrease costs and make resources, as Councilmember Borderood said, readily available for all of our staff speaks for how much the City of Waco is committed to normalizing good, whole, mental health. No matter, we've been through so many things and the stigmas that are associated with it, whatever, you know, turn it to the church, go to your friends. If you need to talk to somebody, you talk to somebody. And licensed somebodies are available too. I mean, there's a therapist in town has a shirt that says, "I talk, I pray, and I see a therapist." And that's just fine because it is normal. And it is what the strong folks do to get through these every days. So it's not just those in dangerous positions, but it is the person who you don't know what they're dealing with at home. And so that we are committed to our staff, committed to each other, in maintaining whole wellness and total wellness speaks volumes for our city. So I thank you Bradley for leading this initiative. Our management staff for support and our staff that have been brave enough to share and normalize what mental health looks like.
Well said. I'll just echo Councilmember Borderood and Councilmember Bearfield. And I appreciate the initiative of the Total Wellbeing Program and making sure everybody knows we're on the same team, you know? And we're all here to help and be a friend. Next item Bradley?
Sure. We've got one informal report on your agenda today. It's IR 329, which provides the investment report for the quarter that ended on March 31st, 2025. We've got seven public hearings on our agenda tonight. Clint Peters, our Director of Development Services, will cover those later in the work session. And then I've got a couple of resolutions I wanted to highlight out of the 22 that are on the agenda. The first one is Resolution 345, which is authorizing a notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation in connection with financial assistance we're receiving from the Texas Water Development Board for our lead service line replacement project. Under this authorization, we'll issue a maximum aggregate principal of about $10 million worth of funding, and that'll go to replace lead service lines in the community. One thing I wanted to highlight on this is this program has some really significant interest earning savings. We intend to see about 3.25% on the interest rate. We finalize later in July 2025, which is cheaper than we'd be able to access in the open market for COs. So appreciate the support from the Texas Water Development Board Program. Resolution 351 is the next one I wanted to highlight. It approves a change order to the contract with Mazonic Construction for additional services over at the Bloodso Miller Steam Center Project. For just over about $100,000, you see the picture on the right, we're very much under construction. A lot of progress being made inside the walls of the building. Wanted to kind of give you a sense of where we are in the project in terms of how much the revised contract is going to be, $9.6 million. But also let you know that we've got an allocated budget of $13.8 million for the project. We're in really good standing to complete this project through the end of the year and it will also include a new park place, a park scape on the right-hand side of the project. So as we see these change orders coming in, just wanted to publicly know we're in good shape budgetarily to handle them and still very much excited about this project coming online late this year. It's an exciting one. Last resolution I wanted to highlight is Resolution 353, which awards a construction contract with Big Creek Construction for our street preservation program, thin overlay project for $2.3 million. We've got a map up of the streets that are going to be improved with an overlay. And I'm highlighting this one for a couple reasons. But one is its usage of our street maintenance fee dollars. And we're, of course, bringing that into every district of the community as the map shows. And we have about 12.45 lane miles of road that get a thin overlay. So you have J.J. Flewellan Orchard Turner in District 1, as well as North 25th and Trice in District 4, Fourth Street and 12th Street in District 2, Lake Air in District 3, and for Councilmember Chase, it looks like Rambler Drive over there in District 5. So excited to bring that forward this afternoon. And we've got three ordinances on the agenda today and all of them are on second reading. So with that, Mayor, that concludes my report and I'll take any questions that the council might have.
Any questions of council to City Manager Ford? I'll just say, one resolution I wanted to point out too, is sort of corollary to the streets is 356 on the pavement asset management software. I just, I love this software and I know that it helps. As the streets, as everybody knows, we're spending quite a bit of money on streets and you see a lot of orange columns and we've got a lot of projects all over the city. And this isn't a big number, but it's really helpful as we get objective data on what condition these streets are on. It's a software program for pavement asset management to see what's improving because we're all trying to get the pavement condition index up to peer city standards. And this is, again, not a big deal here, but I think it also speaks to, not only amplifies what Bradley's saying about getting all over the city with the different street improvements, but also to one of our presentations today is a work session item about software and process improvements that we're making in other parts of the city operations, which I love to see that. Anytime we can improve a process, better define it and use some software to make it better and ultimately more efficient for the city, I'm all about that. So good work on that. Did anybody else have any other items on resolutions or ordinances? Okay, that concludes Bradley's report of the business session. We will now move to the consent agenda, which includes Resolutions 2025-345 through Resolution 2025-366 with no removals or no conflicts of interest on anything today. Great. Are there any items the council would like to remove from the consent agenda? We're going to go straight through. The next item on the agenda is work session items, 2025-330 through 2025-333. City Manager Ford, will you please introduce the first work session?
Yes, sir, I will. I'm told that's the third meeting in a row without any... I mean, I don't know what's going on with Councilmember Borderood. Yeah, I did, sorry. We've got a work session 330 coming up next. It's a discussion of current operations of City Center Waco. I'm going to invite Africa Tarver, Executive Director of City Center Waco, to front here for a presentation on their current operations and upcoming projects. And of course, the council's aware, City Center Waco is a nonprofit organization working specifically in downtown and to support neighborhoods around downtown. And we contract with them for this work and I look forward to today's update, Africa. Thank you for being here.
Good afternoon. As the city manager indicated, as he said previously, my name is Africa Tarver. I'm the Executive Director of City Center Waco. And today I will present the current operations for City Center Waco, as well as some future projects. City Center Waco is a nonprofit organization that was birthed out of the Imagine Waco Plan. Our current composition of our Board of Directors is 15 dedicated community members. We have two of the board members on the board now on the council. Our staff is myself as Executive Director, as well as Office Manager Helga Garay, who is in the building as well. Our funding is administrative. We receive a portion of our funding from the PIT assessment, as well as an additional portion from the City of Waco. This is the breakdown of our City Center Waco budget for the fiscal year 2425. As you see, it reflects the administrative operational revenue and some additional expenses and services. And the bottom line is the ending balance proposed for 2425. City Center Waco has, this identifies the vision, as well as the mission for City Center Waco, and basically is to make a stronger, more vibrant downtown area, to continue things that are going well and then also to be bold and innovative enough to step out and do things that can drive equitable development, not only to the downtown city center, but also to surrounding areas as well. And our efforts are guided by four strategic pillars that are plan, engage, accelerate, and manage. These are defined within this slide, but also our main four pillars are demonstrated by with plan being Main Street participants engaging in the Coco Crawl and Summer Sips, which is a new event that is similar to Coco Crawl, to drive traffic in the downtown area. Also accelerate would be the contract administration for the Public Improvement District Number 1 and manage is collaborations with stakeholders like City of Waco, Creative Waco, Keep Waco Beautiful, and others. Contract administration is one of our primary tasks with City Center Waco. And so as you know, Public Improvement District Number 1 is, it's an acronym for Public Improvement District Number 1. And this is, these public improvement districts are taxed, we have, within a district, property owners are taxed a certain amount and those funds go towards the shared community enhancements such as landscaping, security services, bird remediation, graffiti abatement, wayfinding signs, beautification projects, strategic planning, minor sidewalk repair that does not require engineering, also increasing knowledge of downtown while encouraging locals to visit the downtown area. The rate that is assessed is 10 cents per 100 for property valuation. And in addition to the things that I've stated here, there's also an amount for sponsorships for events within the PIT that drive additional activity in the downtown area. The PIT service and plan budget for fiscal year 2425 is outlined above, where the PIT's assessment being estimated at 703.646. And then there's a breakdown of administrative services, which outlines the management fee that was reflected in the previous slide. The design and service delivery, which is broken down for contract services for landscaping, security, bird remediation, and beautification projects. It also outlines, it also had some funding for wayfinding as well. And then the marketing and merchant support. So that leaves the total, it outlines the total regular expenses. And extraordinary revenue or proposed are things that go outside the proposed amount. So the carryover from previous years, any operating reserve. We picked up University Parks Landscaping, some strategic placemaking and beautification holidays. So things that go outside the normal scope of what we do. This gives us a little bit of extra funding to do things like beautification projects, additional placemaking projects, and then other planned event support. Design and service delivery accounts for one of the largest portions of the budget and this is demonstrated in the landscaping budget or the landscaping contract, which Lawns Limited holds. This is sidewalk maintenance. As you see in the corner, there's the little cart that, there's a gentleman that drives, when you see him riding around the downtown area, that's the cart gentleman. He's there five days a week. And he's also very important in helping me with graffiti removal because he identifies areas that there's graffiti as well. Also, we have power washing and tree trimming and installation and removal of various beautification items as well. That amounts for the largest contract within the PIT budget. Also with the design and service delivery, we have bird remediation, which honestly I did not know was a thing until I came here. And I was shocked with the amount of grackles. But this is an important contract because it's nuisance bird abatement and mess cleanup in a humane manner. And so this, when there are bird droppings, they work with Lawns Limited so that power washing can be done, so that that's done usually. They power wash twice a week generally and they will increase the amount of power washing when they see there's more activity. I receive a report every week from the company that we work with, Urban Bird Services, regarding the activity of the birds overnight and if they're... I receive a lot of activity to let us know if we have to do additional power washing because they're proposing additional activity as well. Also is the graffiti removal, which is really important. And this is within five months, just so you have an idea of how much graffiti is removed on a regular basis, there was 117 incidents within five months. And it's a fast and effective approach to removing vandalism to keep the area clean and the appearance of safety. Generally, if we notify the company, they are a smaller local company. If we notify them, they usually try to get it done if they're not overwhelmed within a week's time. Sometimes it takes a little bit longer, but usually they try to remove the graffiti as we reported within a week's time. And also we have additional strategic placemaking initiatives, which were, some of them are the activation of underutilized spaces such as Seventh Street Plaza and Bridge Street Plaza Maintenance that is held under the Lawns Limited contract. Also, the farmer's market, as many of you know, has recently moved to the Bridge Street Plaza. And that also adds additional activity in that space with events such as the Levitt Amp Series concert. Also, we have small business support initiatives such as the Coco Crawl and Summer Sips, which is a similar program to the, a similar event to Coco Crawl, but it will be done in the summer and we're selling tumblers and participants will be able to go from businesses and get cool drinks in the summer. And this encourages additional foot traffic in the downtown area. We also have minor sidewalk repair that assists with repairing sidewalk when there's non-engineering that's necessary. So it avoids various tripping hazards within the downtown area. The marketing merchant initiatives are important as well. This is a contract that we partner with Four Columns and we do a monthly video, different outbound emails and website updates. One of the things that we're trying to track now is to really see how many clicks people, how many clicks and what drives people to the downtown Waco or Waco Downtown website, as well as the social media. One of the things that we did notice was the April Fools joke with Trader Joe's received a lot of activity, not just from how many clicks, but also I received several calls from it. But we put it out to basically see how people are using that website and how we can be more effective to getting things out. Businesses that are located within the PIT have the opportunity to advertise on our website at no charge to them. And like I said, we generally try to do a monthly video that we spotlight different things. The various sponsorship commitments that we have leverage opportunities to promote downtown and support diverse and special events. And some of these are notated on here. With Waco Wonderland, we assist with the lighting, Levitt Amp Series concerts, as well as the D.O.D. Smurfs. And we are very proud to be a member of the Main Street America. And this slide needs to be updated because when I did this slideshow, we were an affiliate status. We have since received notification that now we are accredited. So we are very excited about that. And that really encourages the historic preservation, as well as the stability of downtown and learning best practices from some of our other communities, some of our neighboring communities as well. Some of the accomplishments that I have experienced since I've been here is the reinstatement to the Main Street Program, which was very important with William Decker Johnson Hall receiving National Historic Designation, which we are extremely, extremely excited about. That offered, the Main Street Program does offer architectural services for property owners that are within the Main Street District. They're not permit-ready drawings, but what they'll do is they'll get renderings from historic pictures that show them what they can do to upgrade their properties to maintain the historic integrity of their buildings. Also organizational and financial management, where we were able to sell properties to acquire additional revenue. As you know, City Center Waco is not an income generating organization. So we were able to sell two properties, one to a commercial business, one we have a tentative sale for a proposed residential. And since we moved out of our building, we moved into 25N, which is a coworking space where that's also cost savings because we're able to share some of the office supplies and it's just a cost-saving measure for us not being in an older building. And with the successful return of the Coco Crawl, we're able to support the small business community. But we were really excited about that. We were able to sell not only the cups, the mugs that I purchased, but also we were able to deplete an existing supply. So we sold over 300 mugs for the Coco Crawl and a lot of the small businesses were very excited about that. And also, we're excited about effective collaborations, such as the ones with either City of Waco, Creative Waco, Keep Waco Beautiful, other stakeholders within the community, because as you know, collaborations make efforts much stronger and you have a greater probability for success. Some of the current initiatives that City Center Waco is involved in is the Seventh Street Plaza Beautification, Summer Sips Program, which will support small businesses, which will be held on June 21st from 11 to 3. And the mugs are, the tumblers are $10 each, a small plug for Summer Sips. Also, we have collaborations with City of Waco for the Banner Program, as well as with ASM Global to maximize opportunities. Because one of the things, as I stated from the marketing, is we see how we're trying to drive traffic to the website and to the social media platform. But we want people to be able to see things that are available in the downtown prior to them actually coming to Waco. Also, we want, we noticed that there are a lot of conferences that are being held in Waco. So we want to work with them to see potentially if there's a QR code that can be used that people can scan when they get here and that will take them directly to our social media page. So they'll be able to see some of the businesses and various things that take place in the downtown area. That was one of the tools that we used for Coco Crawl, as well as Summer Sips. We tried to sort of play off of the density that's already in the downtown area during different events to encourage other events so that some of the small businesses in our community can benefit from that. Also, Main Street, we have the accreditation, we're accredited community. We work with the Economic Development Department for the facade improvement grant program. And now we're working on some strategic planning. For PIT 1, there were some quorum issues that we noticed in the quarter. We usually have four meetings. Of the four meetings, we could not have two for lack of quorum. So we're working on some of those issues now. As well as CCW with strategic planning as well, because as I stated, CCW was created out of the Imagine Waco Plan, but there are some things that have changed. So we want to make sure that the organization is staying up to date and being relevant and assisting the best way that we can and being the best organization that we can. And as you know, that takes strategic planning. Also, I am working on the Planning Committee for Texas Downtown Association Conference, which will be held in Waco November 3rd through 5th. I've been working with Mandy and we're very excited, not just because they've chosen Waco, but because we have an excellent lineup proposed for everyone that is coming here. It really gives us an opportunity to showcase Waco and showcase not only how far we've come, but how much we're moving in such a great direction. So we're really excited to be able to showcase our community. So we're really excited to be able to showcase our community during this downtown conference. Some of the future plans are continued collaborations with stakeholders to maximize visitors in the downtown area, maintaining what's currently working, keeping downtown clean, safe, and being engaging. Also, the QR code, as I previously mentioned, for businesses and various events. I'm hoping that will be done the second quarter. And a downtown merchants alliance, which will be different from the pit. The pit is comprised of property owners. What I'm looking for is something, not, not another chamber, but a group of people in the downtown area that are merchants, that they can sort of, they can have some type of synergy and we can get a collective list of them and say, what are some events that would help you that you really like? Once we're able to get that list, then we can, I really am looking forward to trying to get First Fridays going again, because that's a sort of low lift, but it will have a maximum outcome for people coming to the downtown area benefiting the small, the business community. So that's what I'm looking forward to for the third, for the third quarter. I've already started talking to Four Columns with that, so we're on the very preliminary stages, but we're hoping that that'll be successful. And if, and that is the conclusion of my presentation at this time, and I'll welcome any questions you have at this time.
Any questions for Ms. Tarver? A great presentation.
Thank you so much.
Hey, Africa, how you doing?
I'm doing well, how are you?
Doing well, thanks. Yeah, great presentation, really looking forward to some of the activation that, that you talked about returning and, and it's going to be ongoing with First Fridays especially. I remember when I was a young man.
Years ago.
Many, many years ago. You know, looking forward to that every month, planning my sort of, you know, first weekend, kind of first weekend of the month around that and spending the whole evening downtown, bouncing around from one business to another. So I'm really, really looking forward to that. I know it wasn't touched on specifically in this presentation, and let me know if, if I need to, to keep it, I think we're fine to talk about the city center stuff, but the Seventh Street, the mural, I guess we, we saw, you touched on a little bit. I know we have the Community Paint Day tentatively scheduled for May 31st on that.
Yes, sir.
Do we know, and I feel like I've asked several people on all sides of this, and we maybe just need to get offline and connect on it, but with, for getting power to the Seventh Street Plaza, do we know where we're at with that?
Yes, we're actually working with Nesbit Engineering regarding that. So they were trying to do it prior to the installation of the mural.
Yeah.
Absolutely, but some things, it was a little bit more challenging. That's still proposed, and he's working with someone now. I know that he's also working with someone, I don't know exactly, but I know he's working with someone from the city as well. But that is something that we have, I've talked to him about. I have an, a contract that will go before City Center Waco soon regarding that work to be done, so that some, they'll have some power platforms installed. That's what's being proposed. We wanted to have the lights to go from building to building, but that just didn't work out as well as we thought that it would. So now we're getting some proposals to have some freestanding poles, so that there'll be string lights that go back and forth within the poles. So hopefully that'll be, it's all being done. We're going to try to do it, at least do some of the tentative work prior to the installation of the mural being done. But if not, then they're just, he's going to have to learn, find a way to work around it to protect that piece of artwork.
Awesome, thank you.
You're welcome.
And then last thing, I know you touched on kind of getting together again for some strategic planning and forward thinking for, for City Center Waco, and I really commend you for that. I think that when City Center started, Waco was in a very different place than it was even when, when you took over. And I think that having some time to, to sit down and cast vision for, for what direction the organization, like where does City Center Waco thrive and where can it help downtown thrive in Waco? I'm really looking forward to what comes from those conversations.
Thank you, I'm looking forward to it as well.
Hey, Africa.
Hello.
Thank you for the presentation. I got a couple of notes. On the, the extraordinary revenue piece, where, where is that coming from again?
So it's actually, part of it is the, part of it, it's like the excess, so the proposed amount would be like if the assessment, the estimate amount was 703, anything over that would be.
Carryover.
Consider, yes, so it's carryover.
And so that's what that is from the year, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I have a challenge for you.
Okay.
Let's find a new name for clean and safe.
Okay.
I mean, I know what it is, but I mean, we can make it a little, you know, put a little pizzazz with that or something. Because yes, we want the downtown to be clean, and of course, we want it to be safe, but we also want it to be invi, I mean, give me a little something, make it a contest. With Levitt coming to an end.
Yes.
Do we have any thoughts on what is going, I mean, I know Levitt is, it's a whole beautiful thing in itself and the ability to do so, but at City Center, given any thoughts to what that, their place, their role in activating that space in the next few years? And if not, can you? Because I think that it's been a wonderful opportunity for our, our residents specifically and just, and not that I'm saying bring in, you know, music, musicians from all over the country or whatever, but I think it would be a great time to highlight local artists. And so just giving some thought to what happens when Levitt, when the series comes to an end. The work with Four Columns has been great, they're an amazing organization. Who, who is it targeted to? So like, I know your socials are, you know, for the world or whatever, but is it geared more towards the people who are visitors to downtown or the residents or both?
It's a little bit of both. And so a lot, so a lot of the advertisements, some of them will be specific to people that are here. Some of them will be, because there are some ongoing advertisements to let people know this is, we have a calendar of events, this takes place on a regular basis. But then also, there are some things that are very strategically marketed to, or they're aimed towards people that are visiting the area as well.
And do you work with Baylor on that at all?
I do not.
Okay, okay.
I can, I can definitely.
I mean, just, just ask because of the students and them being, some of them, especially the freshmen being new Wacoans, that, that would give them a little insight into that. And y'all forgive me, because the way Jim goes in on Colin and Blue about the numbers, this is me at City Center Waco. So I'm super proud that you've gotten the Main Street accreditation, that was incredibly, Main Street is a, a amazing organization nationally, and we, 2014, Waco became a Main Street city. It has, just the, the network of cities allows amazing opportunity for growth and development of city, of downtowns all over, because I don't have to reinvent the wheel, because I can see what my successful sister cities are doing. And, you know, we participate in R and D ripoff and duplicate all the time, and, you know, it's a great organization to participate in. I'm glad that we got that settled, because it, it, it was uneasy for me to not be, have that accreditation, because it just offers up so many resources to our community.
Yes, it does.
Tell me again the dates of the summer sip, the summer sip?
It will be June 21st. And actually, as far as like with, it's funny you brought up music, because that's also the same day as Make Music with Creative Waco. So we're sort of doing a dual like marketing approach to let people know, and that's where we found the greatest success is really playing off of multiple events, so people know there's something for everyone in Waco.
Absolutely. Many hands make light work. And regarding, my last question, regarding facade improvements, how many, have we given any this year?
No, we have not, we have not this year.
Okay, and it, because that is something that will be reactivated?
It's currently, it's an ongoing program, so, so some, no one has applied for it this year.
Got it. That was a problem, that's been a longstanding problem, and I encourage our small businesses within the pit for sure, and in our downtown to consider, you know, there are resources available to help, and in small businesses, every dollar matters. So I think that City Center Waco offering the facade improvement grant is a, just a feather in the cap of something that our small business owners don't have to deal with. Super excited about TDA coming. Some of, in my former life, friends are chairing the TDA, and Waco has been called, called upon because, of course, we're excellent, but they have, really enjoy our community, and I look forward to bringing all of our Texas downtowns into our town to see, you know, showing what we're working with. So thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I'll echo Councilmember Bearfield, who hit all my points, obviously, and much better than I would have hit him as well, I'll say. But the, the thing I had written down, Andre, or Councilmember Bearfield, or Mayor Proton Bearfield, the same, clean and safe, I see that you, we did add activated, clean and safe and activated, but it seems like it's been kind of laural, it's sort of, I know it's a high standard, and you do a great job at it, but if there's some way to make that pop, and not, not just the saying, but we want it to be the cleanest and the safest and the brightest and the, and, but I'm glad that at least added the word activated, because that's super important, not just having the facilities there, but to have all these, all these things going on. Seventh Street, Bridge Street, the farmer's market, Waco Wonderland, Dia de los Muertos, the Levitt Series, the Coco Crawl, and what you're trying to do with the Downtown Merchants Alliance, First Fridays and the TD, the Texas Downtown Association Conference. I applaud you for keeping, edging in this activation adjective as well as clean and safe. However, we can help with the cleanest and safest and coolest and best downtown council is here to, to help. Any other, any other questions or comments? Great presentation.
Always glad to see the Coco Crawl activated.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Tarver. The next item is, it feels like we're right on schedule here. The Work Session 2025, Desk 331, City Manager Ford.
We are, we are like within one minute of schedule right now. We're like, we're dialed in, so I'm going to have some long pauses in my introduction to get us back right on schedule.
You're telling, you're saying that Andre and I can talk more on the next one?
You can talk more, and I'll give you even more freedom, because I, I forgot to mention at the open of the meeting, we do not have a need for executive session. And so we are able to float into the five o'clock hour as the council sees fit. But next up, Work Session 331, a discussion of City of Waco Aquatics by Jonathan Cook, our Director of Parks and Recreation. Excited for this update, it's going to cover a number of topics, including the new community pool at Doris Miller Community Center, as well as an update on Hawaiian Falls operations for 2024 and what to look out for in 2025. So I'm going to let Jonathan just dive on in.
It's pretty good. I was just going to say stay on schedule, but that's good. Council, Mayor, and Councilmembers Bradley, I appreciate the opportunity to sit in front of you today, and it's a little exciting. We, we've been in front and talked about several projects that we've had over the past couple of years, but really to see these projects transform into what we see as an aquatics program, and really trying to deliver on some initiatives. We know swim lessons has just been a, you know, very important deal and something that we've been lacking. So I'm excited to sit here and give you a report on where we're at. We're going to be looking, first, we're going to look at the overview of the Doris Miller Community Pool, which we did open in February, and we'll be looking at some initial numbers from the first couple of months, and then also giving a preview of what we have planned for the summer. And then along with that, we're going to be giving our annual overview of the Hawaiian Falls Waco Report. Glad to have members Kurt and Ron here from Hawaiian Falls and Pro Parks Management today. They've been doing some great jobs with Hawaiian Falls, that summer has already started. And so we're going to look back at some final numbers from last year, but then also give an outlook of the 25 season. There's no doubt, and that's a very bright slide, but that's a big lead, a big headline, an exciting day that we all shared as we opened up the Doris Miller Community Pool in January 25th. And so just to get to the point and say, hey, this is a complete renovation of a pool and really become Waco's first indoor public pool, just an exciting day in my career and I know even more so for the community. In regards to the Doris Miller Pool, this is a part of the former YMCA facility that sits on the Paul Queen Campus, and the city purchased this facility in October of '21. From there, we went into a really a two-year renovation project of the in, inside of the facility, focusing on getting that community center activated. You know what the purchase of this facility and the renovation allowed was for us to be able to open up the Bledsoe Miller Steam Center, or Bledsoe Miller Center and start that steam center project as well. So really gives us two anchors along Elm and East Waco right there, and we were excited to open the Doris Miller Community Center and start our summer programming in June of '23. And since then, every time I drive by, in fact, every time I go home from a city council meeting, I go out that way, and amazing that field and the baseball field, the activation that we're seeing is great, but there's always been something that's missing. And that was that indoor pool that was shuttered. Outdoor pool, it had become non-functional. And so we have come back in the past year, not only redone the outdoor areas, but a million dollar renovation of that indoor pool. The indoor pool is a, is equipped to accommodate lap swimming, open swim, fitness classes, and like I mentioned, swim lessons. This is a lap pool, you know, it ranges from four to seven feet, so not your standard zero depth, a recreational pool, still can have plenty of recreation, kids love it, but it's a really specialty in looking at the lap swimming and the swim lesson, all, all swim lesson offerings. Improvements of the pool, we came in and did a complete rehab and painting of the interior and the exterior of the building. Roof repairs were obviously a role in that, and so were no more leaks in the area, redid the installation. Also came in with a repair and replacement of the pool systems. Crucial ADA upgrades, just like accessible chairs for water access. One of my favorite things was the replacement of the overhead doors, the garage doors on the side. They were solid, so it was sort of dark in that building. Now we've done the glass doors to where sunlight comes through, and that natural light adds a lot to the feel of the building. And also made enhancements to the heating system, so it is utilized year round, and then the ventilation and even replacing the lighting just made a world of difference. Current scheduled, as I mentioned, once we did the grand opening, we started opening up for the public. And our current hours now are operating four days a week, specializing in that eight to noon area on those days where we're seeing a lot of the lap swimming and then also the fitness classes. Been coming around in that open swim also at four to seven on the Mondays and Wednesdays. And what we've seen there, that's where you get maybe some families coming out, but then also that's a good time for swim lessons as well, as parents get off of work. We brought in, from the staffing perspective, an aquatic supervisor, and also made a requirement for two of our recreation leads to obtain that lifeguard certification to assist with our full-time staffing. From a lifeguard and swim instructors approach, we have been hiring through contract, working with our contact at Pro Parks, also different pools around the area of really getting into the lifeguard game. Per Texas Code, the Doris Miller Community Pool is classified as a Class B public pool. So what that means, we have to have a minimal of two lifeguards on the stand at all times, and those have to be dedicated lifeguards, they can't be doing other items. So there's a little bit of method to the magic there. We've been operating with 10 to 15 contracted lifeguards. Obviously, it's summer, so we've been making a push. Currently, there is a lifeguard certification class. Our aquatic supervisor, Tara Govanall, received her certification to be able to teach classes. And so now we're able to train our own. The class currently has, started with 12 registered right now, so we'll be able to bring some of those lifeguards on, and then we're going to be offering an additional class in June next month. So making some strides in that area to start training, you know, young people, even older people, maybe retired, we're open to everyone, but there's a constant need for lifeguards as safety is the most important feature and aspect in operating the pool.
Can, Jonathan, briefly, what's the, what's the youngest lifeguard could be age-wise to, to strap on there and, and be on the lifeguard tower?
Sure, right now, we're hiring at 16 and up, and that's something that we're looking at. I know Hawaiian Falls and some others, and I might get corrected, the 15 age, you can start at 14, but we're at 16 at years old right now.
Thank you.
Programs and participation, I'll give you a little snapshot of what's been going on out at the pool. I mentioned really the, I would say that lap swimming, we've got some dedicated people who are there every morning, and that just ranges from people looking to exercise, but then also people training for triathlons. And so we've seen a push there in that open swim, but nearly 600 people came through. These numbers are through February and April. Initial reports from May, these numbers. Initial reports from May, these numbers are obviously on the increase. And we expect May, June, July to be really strong months. Mentioned we've had nearly a hundred people in the water fitness classes. The swim lessons and drowning prevention, those numbers have really picked up. Gone are the days, and they're still larger classes, but I'll say sort of the method is a lot more individualized with swim lessons and smaller groups. But we have those taking place every day right now. Our community centers also spent a day and went and visited during their spring break camps. And that was sort of a primer going into the summer as the Doris Miller and trips to the Doris Miller Pool are gonna be, you know, assimilated into our summer camp programming and starting with learn to swim. And that's something they already, our summer camps already participate out at Hawaiian Falls and go there as well. But this is really focused on that learn to swim and drowning prevention, sort of that first step to make sure all of our kids have a baseline level of water safety. And then even being creative and looking at different opportunities. Waco Fire has been a big supporter, not only with the help as we did the remodel, but they've come and done some fire training. This weekend at the Doris Miller Facility, they're also offering a hands-on CPR class. So the potential for different styles of collaboration, we've seen that as well. And we're looking for that total participation to continue to rise.
Jonathan, I realize nobody's probably thinking much about swim lessons in February, March and April. Do you have like rough numbers of what you expect over the summer?
Right now we have about twenty applied. I would expect those numbers is we're pushing it out, promoting to get up close to a hundred. I would think maybe a hundred a month, an estimation.
Thanks.
It rolls right in, our summer forecast, that promotion of swim lessons. And that's something we putting out on our social media with some paid ads and then making sure that people are just aware that this opportunity is now available. With that, we're continuing to push for lifeguards to make sure that we have a steady workforce. You know, schedules are a little bit all over the place and working with lifeguards sometimes, so more is definitely best. And we just feel like it's a great opportunity for people for a second job to be active. But what those additional lifeguards will allow us to do is continue the expansion of the programming. Right now we're expanding hours on the Friday and Saturday for the summer, stretching that till three o'clock to allow for more of the open swim. As we get our lifeguards and the certifications in place, one of the key areas I want to focus on is also that open swim on the afternoons as well. We've got a gap built in there that's good for some break time in there. But we do see the, the potential for some expansion in that area and expanded programs. Summer camp visits, I mentioned that in another area of expansion for us. We have not done pool rentals to date, but opening the pool up for rentals. We've got Saturday opportunities, also different hours for birthday parties. There's a patio area. Once again, we've got to coordinate that with our staffing model. But that's definitely an area that we're ready to kick off. And we've had calls already about people wanting to be able to rent it for a party. And then a continual analysis of the expenses and the revenues. Hard to tell just the first three months, Councilmember Chase, like you mentioned, you know, February and March, just getting started. So really looking at where we stand this summer will give us a good preview of that expense revenue model and where we go from here. So switching gears from Doris and we can definitely come back questions at the end. But want to give a recap and overview of our Hawaiian Falls Water Park out off of Lake Shore Drive. As you may know, the water park originally started as the Waco Water Park, opened in two thousand one, two thousand two range. As there was a construction of several projects in the area called Riverbend Park with the baseball and softball fields and also the Waco Regional Tennis and Fitness Facility. For a stretch of years up until two thousand eleven, the water park, Waco Water Park, didn't have all the major slides, but it was operated by the city. And so there were certain components with the zero-depth entry pool, also the lap pool were there. But in two thousand eleven is where a contract was created in regards to Hawaiian Falls. Came in, they operated multiple Hawaiian Falls through the Texas area. And they did an expansion project and took over management of the property to establish two new slide complexes, also built in the lazy river and all large-scale family wave pool. Park's been extremely popular and stable for the most part of those last fifteen years. But a big key in that moment was in two thousand and eighteen to where Pro Parks Management came on board. Really honed in on making this a regional attraction, open daily, May through September, and capitalizing sort of on the uniqueness that it sits in a natural area. A lot of pools, especially good Hawaiian Falls, and I'm not knocking on them in the Metroplex, but a lot of concrete. This one, sure, a lot of concrete, you gotta watch your feet, but to have a pool with natural shade and then a lot of different shade areas creates a comfortable environment. But currently it does feature twelve slides with the lazy river and the wave pool. A big push in creating some aquatic playscapes for kids. And then also I mentioned the lap pool, food and beverage areas, shade cabanas, and then also the island by the lazy river. A little more dive into the contract history with Hawaiian Falls and Pro Parks Management. Mentioned in two thousand eleven, there was the initial ground lease and operating agreement that was transferred over to Pro Parks Management and store master funding in eighteen. Since that time, pretty much every year we've come to the council, not only with an annual report, but there has been a series of lease abatements, construction extension, also an agreement to allow the sale of alcohol beverages. Those lease abatements is we've done that, which are included in the contract. There has also been a continual investment by Pro Parks Management into capital improvements at the park to make sure the wear and tear on the water park is every time I always make the statement. But it's like living on the ocean on the beach, you know? It's just constant water, chemicals and sun. So just a tremendous amount of upkeep to keep the park in a quality condition. And Kurt and his team has really excelled in that area, especially over the last few years. Looking specifically at some numbers from last year, we've got a pretty steady attendance, no doubt. We were wanting to eclipse that hundred thousand mark as did in the summer of twenty-three. But as with a lot of things that we deal with in Parks and Recreation, there's a lot of weather-related factors. There was an increase in twenty twenty-four. If y'all remember this time last year, we saw the river come way up with a lot of rain. And you know, the cloudy weather, even being in the eighties compared to nineties and sunny, that has an impact. So there were seventeen bad weather days in twenty-four compared to twenty-ten and twenty-three. And a lot of those bad weather days were morning delays as well. And looking back at some of the numbers provided. Even with that said, a little drop in attendance, but very happy season pass sales did very well, hitting almost twelve thousand. And that revenue remained steady as well. Definitely want to mention those revenue numbers really in line at twenty-two to twenty-four. But one of the biggest difference, even though we had more people last year come to the park, was the group admissions. If you remember back, we were coming out of the pandemic in twenty-two and field trips were a lot less. What we've seen is a big bounce back in those group field trips. Group field trips will often come at a discounted rate, maybe not hitting the meal hours, hitting the concession stands as much. But it's also good to see in just visiting tomorrow out at the park. La Vega School District will have multiple classes out for a field day. Eight hundred kids are expected to be out there enjoying the park tomorrow. So those field trips go a long way. And same thing with our community center summer camps, getting those kids out there. Our camps get a free summer pass with that admission to summer camp as well. A few more highlights, I want to make note from the twenty-four season as really stepped up the game in regards to community promotions, getting involved in our community and the marketing efforts. But overall, not just capital improvements, but additional improvements to the park, included renovation of three hundred thousand dollars of projects with the new Kiki Cove renovation. That was an original feature when you walk into the park, the original playscape for kids had served its life after being repainted and refurbished, but now a new structure is in place with also some new surfacing there. One of the things, that shade factor always comes up, but the number one thing that we, we hear from the park, food and beverage. Finding that habit where you're not waiting, maybe not waiting in line, but then also different options of food and beverage as well. They've done a great job with that. My favorite is going out and getting a HTO big cup out there. So, but also remain a commitment to affordability. One thing that the season pass promotion is very important, but making sure off-season, spring promo is able to get that season pass for a fifty-dollar compared to if you go at the gate, you know, you're looking at a twenty-five, thirty-dollar daily fee. So understanding the limitations and want to make sure the park's available while they've also added in not only making sure that's an accessible price point, but then special discounts throughout and very promotional officers. They work with Baylor University, Waco SD, giving away free tickets for teachers. It is a countless list of different types of promotions, even had some Texas Rangers out last year for a meet and greet. And this year, there's Mother's Day on the left, but last weekend they did the Mother's Day or back promotion to kick off the season. And so always forward-thinking and looking at different ways to get people out to the park through special events and promotions. I mentioned the investment that they made in just this past year, but a really a five-year snapshot of what we've seen is each year picking a certain area of the park to make a substantial improvement. And this has been everything from twenty-one where they redid the Hula Island, a new pavilion refurbishment of it in twenty twenty-two. And twenty twenty-three, a lot of different improvements went in, replaced rusted stairwells on slides. And one of the key features in twenty-three was the new water sanitation system. Really made an improvement in the water quality. And I mentioned the projects that they've come in this year as well. Now looking for twenty-five, that was for last year. This season, this is a fresh picture on the left and that goes to that water system, just crystal clear water. They came in and did a complete refurbishment of the competition lap pool surface. That included hitting some rough areas and then also repainting that area. So it looks great right now. They have the ability and work with different groups, swim lessons. But then it's open for swim as well, for open for lap swimming for parents coming out. They also installed a new pump system for the wave pool. Keeping that, you know, wave pools and that technology just keeps growing. So keeping up with different other facilities around the state, that new, so you'll have more waves in that wave pool. And also an increase in family rental options. The cabana rentals in different areas for the families to be proven to be a good revenue source. So an increase of shade areas that can be rented. Staffing and safety goes back just like with Doris Miller and any pool. The two S's are really what you're gonna be honing in on. You gotta be properly staffed and maintain a safe environment. Over two hundred employees will be working out at Hawaiian Falls throughout the summer, a variety of different jobs. And one thing is I want to note down at the bottom of picture, you know, a five-star rating on their lifeguard is called Star Guard Certification. I know that's a really big component of Pro Parks Mission and safety, so wanted to recognize that as well. Summer's here, there's no doubt. If you got kids, it's last week of school. Mine have already been asking to go swimming, but they did open to the general public on May tenth on Saturdays. They had done some season pass previews the weekend before. And as I mentioned, the field trips have been pretty steady out there. Starting this Friday, be kicking off the Memorial Day weekend. And that will start on Friday evening, open to the public. And from there on, all the way and through Labor Day, you're looking at daily attendance and daily programs and activities going on at Hawaiian Falls. Weekly promotion, community events, that's part of it. And so we're excited about another season, their desire to continue to grow the park and continue to be a part of our Waco community. They've had that commitment and so glad to be working with them and for another year at Hawaiian Falls. With that, happy to take any questions in regards to Hawaiian Falls or the Doris Miller Community Pool.
Great presentation, Jonathan. Any questions or comments of Director Park?
I was just gonna say, I applaud you all for your commitment to affordability. That really seems like quite a deal for people.
So thank you, Jonathan, for the presentation. It's, it's awesome to see, you know, first the development and the continued enhancement at Hawaiian Falls. It's a jewel for District One and for Waco. And so we appreciate everything that you all have done to make you staff, you Pro Parks, for keeping Hawaiian Falls just a jewel in our crown. Secondly, you know, I'm stoked about the Miller Pool. I am one of those new main numbers because I have signed up for my aquatic class and have been going diligently. Yeah, I gotta figure out how to work around that possible Waco meeting. Don't worry about it. I'm gonna get it together. I'm gonna come back for afternoon swim. But one of the things that I'll say is, I don't know if you remember at the ribbon cutting, there was a woman who was the very first person there. She was, it was eight o'clock in the morning and she was there. And she has, she was a part of the Y group that was taking water aerobics. She was there when the doors closed. When we opened, she was the first one there. I see her in class and it just tickles me to death because to know that the people have been looking forward to and looking back to getting back involved in aquatic fitness. It is, it's just been truly a great thing. I'm applauding the use of the facility for other things like the CPR class. And I hope that you're sharing that stuff on social as well, because I mean, it just brings more attention to the facility. Want to see those numbers continue to grow. I know that it'll be a success. It's just about time. I was talking to Tara the other day and I was like, it's just about, you know, about the hours that are being expanded for summer and all of that. And I was like, it's just gonna take time. And you know, when you start in the winter, people aren't, their minds are focused on pools. But as we enter in the summer, I'm really grateful for everything that has been done to get the pool ready and to get our community ready to have Waco, the city of Waco's first indoor pool, open and active and engaged. How much are those pool rentals?
The pool rentals, I'm not giving this quote off the top of my head. We do have that built into the fee schedule, however. So we can definitely get back to that. But I know we did create that fee.
Yeah, no, I think it's great. And the area that's right outside of the pool is great for a party and it's built for it. So it's a, an awesome opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just commend Jonathan, your work and Pro Parks with Hawaiian Falls. I know that we've got a kind of interesting deal with them and I feel like we, we certainly get the bang for our buck with reinvestment that they continue to put into the park. So thank you guys for that. And continue, I feel like every, you know, every year as we kick off summer and you come give a presentation, we've got some, you know, multi-tens or hundreds of thousands of dollars of reinvestment and renovation that's happened at Hawaiian Falls. And doing so while keeping the season pass costs consistent. In a time where things, you know, otherwise are incredibly inflationary. So I really appreciate that. And I know that there's plenty of families and young children that, that, you know, are really appreciative that this summer. I know that maybe before she should have, my mom would buy us season passes to the local water park. And you know, that'd be, that would be our daycare for the summer. Yeah, we'd ride our bikes, so wouldn't even do that. But, but it was, I mean, we really looked forward to, you know, every summer when that would kick off and would spend, you know, most of our day there and just, she'd come pick us up at the end of the day. So I'm really thankful that we have something like that here that's affordable and that can be a really great time for, for families and a great memory for, for the kids in Waco.
Jonathan, yeah, great presentation. I like how the theme of kind of some of this was activation, like we're talking about on these other deals, particularly on Miller Center Pool. And it, and reminding me about how that light is coming in those windows. It makes just, it's a difference between night and day, you know, literally. And making you feel more comfortable in there, making it a little more open, that is, is great. Numbers are good, good participation. And I like the focus on safety and lessons and that program. And just to echo Councilmember Ewing on his childhood, I had the same thing, childhood going, you know, drop, being dropped off. We rode a bus to the pool, you know, went around the country, picked up and took the bus to the next town because we didn't have a pool. But it was still, yeah, Nebraska, we had one pool. But anyway, that part I think is really gonna catch on and I'm happy that the city is latching on to that because I think people will remember that and fondly and as they grow into other things. The Hawaiian Falls Pro Parks guys, thanks for being here today. Those enterprises do require do require a lot of upkeep, but I know we're kind of doing some payment in kind on capex and, and lease payments, but, uh, we're pleased with how those upgrades look and how you're keeping it refurbished and new, uh, looking. And that's important for, uh, to make it as attractive as possible. And these, uh, these two activities really complement our other water activities in, in the city, like, uh, Waco Surf and the Twin Bridges Beach and Camp Finpo. And we're just, I like to see as the summertime heat hits us that people have places to go and swim and have fun. And I appreciate, uh, what you're doing Jonathan, you and your, your team at Parks and Rec, uh, really, and really get that Miller Center launched and, and it's, and it's looking good. And I do remember that lady that was, she was there super early with her swimming thing on. It was kind of cool. It was cold out there. It was kind of cool. But I'm glad she's there and I'm glad everybody is enjoying the pool. I encourage everybody to get over there. Any other questions? Jonathan, thank you so much. Great presentation.
Appreciate it.
Um, our next item is work session item 2025 dash three 32, discussion of development services, uh, that department, uh, City Manager Ford.
Thanks Mayor. We've, on work session three 32 inviting Clint Peters up. He's our Director of Development Services. He's gonna provide an update on activities and recent process improvements in development services. Uh, this has been a major priority area for the council, uh, since 2024, uh, when you funded a development services efficiency study. And certainly over the last few months, we've made some significant strides in, um, that Clint's gonna tell you about. And I'll let him provide the details, but I want to preface his presentation by saying the work of the development services team and Clint, his team is, uh, starting to gain real traction and excited about the early results. And one of the ways I measure that frankly, is the number of complaint emails, texts and calls versus the number of compliment emails, texts and calls. And we're starting to see less complaints and more compliments. And so I'm excited about those early returns in the investments we're making and really appreciate Clint. And I know he's got several staffers here today that are really working hard on this initiative. And so Clint, I'll, I'll let you share the specifics, but I just wanted to counsel know, I think we're heading in the right direction.
Thank you Bradley, Mayor, Council. Thank you for the support Bradley. Uh, yes, this is a, uh, an update on a presentation we did last September, uh, after our efficiency of study. Uh, and we are excited to share some of the results from what we've been working on over the last nine months and, uh, some things we have for the future. Uh, so we do, uh, want to cover some recent permitting trends, uh, for the city, overall overview of our department reorganization that's helping us, uh, move these initiatives forward a little quicker in the time pace we want to be at, uh, talk about some of the improvements and then, uh, adoption of our, uh, new building codes that we're looking at. So our recent permit trends are really positive. Um, these are residential permit data. As you can see, th- these are, uh, stats based on, um, fiscal year. So about seven months of data. Uh, so a good trend line. You can see that top left is the residential single family new starts. Um, and this goes all the way back to the late nineties, 1999, I believe. Uh, you can see, uh, we're, we've gone up considerably from the nineties through the two thousands. Our peak years were 2023, 2022, when we were up close to 700 permits a year. Uh, we dipped a little bit, but we are trending up again this year to be close to, uh, 600 single family new starts, uh, which is a good sign. Uh, overall, uh, total units are trending, um, ab- above last year's, um, pace. Uh, you can see the only thing that we're a little lower, uh, than last year is the, uh, multifamily new starts. Uh, we do have a, uh, pretty large, uh, project in the permitting pipeline in May. So I anticipate those numbers for the multifamily to, uh, project ahead of what we saw, uh, last year. Uh, permits over, overall, uh, again, positive numbers. Um, we are, uh, even, even though we're decreasing a little bit, uh, from last year on our permits year over year, about four percent, our permit valuation is up about 11% and our, uh, permit fees is up about 15%. Uh, currently to year to date, we're almost $460 million worth of valuation of permits that have been issued in the city, which is a good number. Uh, and then we're averaging about 700 per- permits a month.
On this, on that page Clint Holmes here, the first two columns are just the month, right?
Just, yeah, April, comparing April of 25 to April of 24.
Okay. And then the last column is the, the seven months or whatever, October to?
Yes, sir.
Did we pick up the same data over year to date 2025, 2024, I mean, like the previous year to date? Not on this page, but I'm sure the data's there somewhere, right?
Yeah, the fiscal year to date is, is that column 2024.
The last column?
Yeah, I was, I would have liked to seen what happened last year, this year, for the entire year.
We can, we can provide that for you. Um, our inspection numbers, we are, um, we've been averaging in that 2,500 a month inspections. Uh, in, in April, we did peak up to 3,000, which is bumping up, uh, to the ceiling of our, our capacity under our current staffing, um, model. So we're, we're working on, and you'll see some other initiatives on, uh, either reducing that number, um, trying to get, um, inspections approved the first time. And that's through education, make sure we're being clear of what the expectations are when we go out for an inspection. Uh, and then looking at, um, uh, technology to take the place of actually having to go out for inspection numbers or, or in-person inspections.
What is capacity now?
Um, so it, at this, at this number, at 3,000, uh, a month, um, under our current staffing, cause we do have two vacant inspector positioned, uh, even with our third party, we're about 16 inspections per day, per inspector. That's a little higher than we want to see, uh, to provide good customer service. Go, we wouldn't want to be in that 12 to 13 a day. Uh, and we think we can get there. Um, this is one of our, our KPIs where you can see, um, next day inspections. So if you, if you call in for an inspection by four o'clock, uh, you know, today the expectation is that your inspection will be done, uh, sometime tomorrow. Uh, so we, uh, you know, our goal is 98% of those would be next day inspections. Uh, this is calendar year, um, looking from la- last year to this year, we are, we have seen some, uh, some improvement there. We are about 87% of all inspections hitting that next day. And we're about 94% uh, currently, uh, this year.
Seems like the calendar year Clint is a lot stronger than last calendar year, but April, did we lose a position or?
We did, we did drop a little bit, um, because of that number went up. So that, again, when you bump up closer to that 3,000 and, and you can see in this next slide, uh, for March, we did drop down. We were, uh, trending up to that 96% and that, and we did drop down to 92. So that sweet spot, about 2,500, um, inspections is where we need to be to, to hit those, get close to that number.
Clint helped me get on next day inspections. That's, somebody calls you one day and you're out there the very next day?
Yep.
Wow.
24 hours.
Okay.
As long as you get your, get your inspection scheduled by four o'clock.
So go back to that side, like around 95% is our, that's, that's pretty good.
Yeah, our goal is 98%. So we're a little below it, but, um, we have some strategies in place to get that number to where it needs to be.
Then there, is there, I, I don't want to get in the weeds on this, but is there like paperwork you have to do to complete the inspection that takes some time too, or, or is that?
Yeah. So there's a, uh, inspection report done for each inspection, uh, that gets sent to the applicant through our, um, permitting system. Uh, and when we'll talk about, um, some of the strategies that we're working on to improve not only the, uh, getting inspections approved the, the first time around. So we're not having to go out for additional reinspection, which ticks that number up, uh, but also utilizing, uh, virtual inspection software. We'll talk about that.
Looks super responsive. That's great.
Yeah. Uh, our, our next KPI is our commercial plan review. Uh, this is where we've had the most struggle. Um, our, our goal is, uh, 90% of comments provided within 20 days of plans submitted. Uh, we have seen some improvement over the last year, but again, we're not where we need to be. Um, but we are ticking up a little bit. And then our residential, uh, permits, um, again, our target is 95% permits within five days. Uh, and then these are plans approved and we actually hit a hundred percent in March. So we've, uh, it's seen some pretty drastic improvements over the last year in our, uh, KPI for this. You know, one of the things that we did based on some of our, our KPIs, um, not, not hitting our goals was, uh, what Bradley mentioned is our development service, uh, efficiency study that was, um, finalized in September of last year. And, uh, these were some of the recommendations that came out of that study, um, that spent some time looking at our processes, talking to stakeholders, uh, looking at our, uh, technology that we currently use and then making recommendations. So it, it did, uh, recommend, um, leveraging technology, using it more, uh, for automation to track our applicant status, um, data anali- uh, analysis tools and then sharing inspection information of photos. Um, also it, it, uh, recommended that we get, uh, fact guides for everything, uh, all our standardized policies and procedures, needing to be able to, uh, clearly say, tell our customers what is required, uh, for all our processes. So, uh, it can be predictable from our, uh, customer base. Uh, that's what we talked about a little bit is our, um, inspectors, our, our, our number of inspections per day is higher than, uh, what we should be to provide, you know, optimized customer service levels. Uh, so some of the strategies that, um, we're working on is to lower that number. Uh, and then review staffing levels and organizational structure. Uh, we quickly, um, figured out that, uh, that last one needed to happen. Uh, so we're working on all, all these things, but that needed to happen soon so that we can have the bandwidth and capacity to work on all these other things efficiently. So, uh, this is one of the items that we've been working on over the last three months, um, to get finalized so we can really focus, um, and, and be more proactive than reactive, uh, from a staff level on all these other items. So, um, wanted to go over our reorganization. Um, we had tremendous support from City Manager's Office and HR to get this finalized. Uh, and, um, phase one of our reorganization was completed a couple of weeks ago and, uh, our employees that have, um, part of that have hit the ground running. Our, our main focus over this whole, uh, not only our reorganization, but everything we're working on is, is the customer experience. We want to be more efficient. Uh, we want to be more predictable and consistent. Uh, predictability is a key in our business. Uh, everybody should know exactly what the expectation is from a permit to inspection to a license, from the customer to the contractor, to the designer, to a, a council person. Uh, it should be really easy for everybody to know exactly what expectation is. And then once, once we have clear expectations, we need to be consistently applying those expectations across the board. Uh, and then always we need to be transparent with what we're doing and then have excellent communication, uh, with all our processes. So, um, one of the, um, phase one, uh, we focused on strategy and administration. We have created two new assistant director positions to help create some, uh, bandwidth with our department to help work on all these strategies. Uh, Sarah, Sarah Rayleigh came over from, uh, Legal and she is the assistant director over, uh, what we're calling strategic initiatives, um, division and then our, uh, inspections division. And then Laura Waxstaff, who was our planning, uh, manager, uh, promoted up to an assistant director who's over both the, the planning division and then our co-compliance division. Uh, we also created, uh, strategic initiative positions, again, to help, uh, be forward thinking and proactive on these initiatives instead of being reactive. Uh, we've created an administrative service manager, um, that focuses on a lot of these progress improvement, uh, process improvements, um, efforts. Um, we have a strategic business data analyst that's more focused on the IT part of it, uh, and technology. Um, strategies, our development coordinator supervisor, uh, this is, position is, um, focused on helping, uh, shepherd through, uh, either high profile, um, projects or projects that get stuck, uh, or in, in the system, uh, to help, help those through the permitting process and be, be proactive on working those through our processes. And then we also created a senior long range planner position in our planning division, uh, to help work on some of our long range planning efforts. It's the wrong way. Um, and then also in phase one, emphasis on customer experience. Um, as with that KPI slide that we have that, uh, on our commercial, um, permitting, uh, we, we discovered that we really needed some, uh, increased effort or, or bandwidth in our plan review. Uh, plan reviewers currently, uh, we had four positions in that group and we've, um, upgraded that to six positions. Uh, so that will help. And, uh, we anticipate to see some pretty dramatic changes with our KPIs and that, in our plan review process. Uh, we've also added intake coordinator positions. Uh, these positions will be able to process, uh, permits when they come in, um, through our system, um, be able to, um, review them to make sure they're complete, um, applications, uh, and then get them to the right person to review. Uh, we have, you know, one of the, one of the, the big complaints we get is when somebody submits for a permit and they're missing, uh, uh, you know, a required document that's in that permit set, whether it be a, a plan set or a study or analysis or something. And they don't, and, and they don't get, um, a response back saying, hey, you forgot to submit this piece of it for 20 days. Uh, you know, that creates that frustration of like, well, now I gotta resubmit it and then it starts the 20 days over again. So, uh, the intake coordinators will be able to process permits as they come in, review them from, for completeness, uh, and then provide that instant, um, uh, feedback on whether their application was complete. And if it's not, what's needed to actually start the process. And we could do that in the first couple of days after receiving a permit. So I'm real excited about, uh, that part of it. Uh, we've also added some field supervisors, uh, in all four areas of co-compliance inspections and plan, uh, plan review. Uh, this is the, uh, this will help with, uh, getting, um, response back to, so if somebody does have an issue, there's, there's supervisors out in the field that can address that before it has to go to a supervisor in the office. So hopefully, um, speeding up that customer service. Uh, we have a license coordinator position. We, um, this was, um, licensing has become, uh, a, a bigger part of what we do, especially with short-term rentals and some of their things. Uh, so having a dedicated person for that is important. Uh, a new frontline, a front counter admin assistant position. Um, as with many of our buildings, they were designed to be open concept and with, um, um, safety improvements and security improvements, our building, um, about four years ago, uh, was secured. And so, um, we don't, we didn't have a front desk person to, uh, help customers as they come in. There's a, they would have to, um, call in and then get somebody to come up to us. So now we have a, we were able to create a, uh, admin assistant, uh, front counter, uh, position, not only for our department, but for all the departments in our building that will help with customer service as we, um, deal with, uh, in-person customers. And then we're also working on a phone tree, uh, that will help people get to, uh, the right place. Or if, um, they're not able to get there, they get to a live person operator to cut down on people having to leave messages. And, and I did want to point out, all these, uh, positions, um, were internal, uh, besides three, we have, we have two, uh, plan reviewers and intake coordinator that, uh, we're currently doing interviews for. But all the other positions. But all the other positions were internal staff. We have a really good staff that has a lot of talent and knowledge, and this was an opportunity to put them into positions that met their strengths and can bring the most to the table for our organization. So real excited about being able to provide those opportunities to the staff that we have currently. And then Phase Two, that we're looking at later in the year, is a career ladder for our Code Officers, Inspectors, Plan Reviewers, and Permit Techs. Currently, once you get into one of these positions, it's really hard to promote even with good performance until somebody else above you leaves. And we wanted to create a system where if you're obtaining the licenses in which, in your field, and you're providing good customer service and high performance, where you can promote in place. And so we're creating a career ladder and steps for these positions to incentivize high performance. It also improves retention and recruitment within the department and professional development. Especially for our inspectors, it does create a situation, the more license they get, so there's four different trades that we're looking at, building, plumbing, electrical, and mechanical. The more license they get, the more inspections they can do on site, so we're not having to send multiple inspectors out there, so we can be more efficient. So this will help retain and recruit inspectors that have those multiple license. And we were able to do all this without increasing our FTE, so we were able to keep it at forty-seven through reclassifications and position eliminations, and then also working with other departments, collaborating with other departments. Infrastructure Services, one of the intake coordinated positions, we're going to share with Infrastructure Services, that will intake the public permits as well, the right-of-way permits. So that will help, again, make it more efficient as an applicant moves through the process. And then our Public Works Department took on some of our mowing responsibilities for private lots, which helped, gave us some capacity to create that administrative assistant position for our front desk. So appreciate their collaboration with us. So moving on to the improvement efforts that we're working on, a lot of these are technology-related, permitting software replacement, virtual inspections, automated solar plan review. We have utilized third-party inspection services and plan review services more, and then working on some ordinance updates and public outreach efforts. So first is our new permitting software. We went through a process, starting a couple of years ago, to select a new permitting software company. We did pick Mainstar out of nine proposals. They will provide an online portal for permitting all our planning and zoning processes, inspections, license, co-compliance, and then permits for infrastructure services in our health district. We were under a three-year agreement with them, a little under half a million dollars, which came in well under budget, and it was funded out of our FY24 budget. They by far were the best system from a user standpoint. It is very user-friendly, and then it's very nimble in being able to change processes. You know, once we've established it, if something changes with the process or procedure, we can go in there and change the system quickly. So we're excited about this software. We are about halfway through a year-long implementation of the software. We've been working, right now, we're working on building workflows for all of our processes. And not only are we building them for this, but we're taking the time to make sure the processes make sense and make improvements to those processes as we build them through Mainstar. So it's not only looking at how we can use the technology, but just looking at our process improvement in general. We're still on schedule to go live in November of this year. I think everybody feels comfortable with that. There will be about a three-month post-go-live process that we'll need to work through once we go live, to make sure everything is working correctly, and then training our stakeholders and staff, make sure everything is working as needed. ViewSpecs is our virtual inspection software that we implemented in the fall last year. We have had success with it. We're still training and working on implementation. Right now, we're mainly using it for what we call offline reports, because it is not integrated into our existing permitting system, but it will be integrated with the new Mainstar permitting system. And then we're looking at expanding the eligible permit. So, you know, we anticipate this tool being greatly expanded upon in the next six to nine months as the new system comes in place. And this, this will help those inspection numbers, because we will not have to go, especially with our re-inspections, we will not have to go back out to the site to do the re-inspections. Some of our partners that have adopted using ViewSpecs are some of our larger projects. Graphic Packaging International, GPI, has been using it quite a bit, which has helped our efficiency on that. That's a very large and crowded work site. So, you know, it just, you know, it takes thirty minutes to an hour just to get on-site, get to the right person before you even start the inspection. So eliminating, eliminating the need to go out on-site and being able to do that online, it will make our process a lot more efficient, from our standpoint and the customer's standpoint. We're doing the same with ElectroLit. And then two of our contractor partners, Rogers O'Brien and Mazonic Construction, have really worked with us to implement this ViewSpecs. So our current eligible permits that we're using it for are plumbing, HVAC, some are mechanical and electrical, building, framing, and roofing. And like I said, we're looking to expand this to more options. We have been talking with Pima County out of Arizona to get, they have, I guess they're kind of the lead-in class on using ViewSpecs to the ultimate capacity. And so we have had some discussions with them on how to utilize it more, so they've been helping us with that.
Is Mazonic using it for the steam center?
ViewSpecs. Developers can complete certain inspections on any device, anywhere, even on job sites.
Thank you. Yes, Mazonic is using it. That's one of the projects they're using it on. So here's a little video that talks about ViewSpecs and its capabilities.
ViewSpecs. Developers can complete certain inspections on any device, anywhere, even on job sites with a limited phone connection. No need to wait for an inspector to visit your job site, and no downloads are required. ViewSpecs is accessible directly through your phone's web browser and built-in GPS. Virtual inspections are tailored to any type of internet connection. You can make a video call for job sites where you have a strong internet connection, or connect over chat if your internet connection is limited. Don't have an internet connection? With the ViewSpecs mobile app, you can also work completely offline to take photos and videos and upload them later. Get started at Waco-Texas.com/virtualinspection.
I wanted to thank our Comms Department for helping us with that PSA, and then our actors, Jeremy and Ricky, our inspectors, that helped with that video. And you can see, you know, the, you know, the potential it has to help with our inspection process, so we're real excited about that. Another technology effort that we're working on is SolarApp Plus. This is an automated plan review system for solar. It's originally funded by the Department of Energy to promote the use of solar. It's actually, so applicants can submit to SolarApp, they'll do a review, there's no cost to the city, and it, once they approve it, then they're, you know, we can permit it, so it speeds up the permitting process for that. We actually, this is our pilot program as of last week, is live, so we'll be getting the message out on SolarApp, and I look forward to customers being able to use this in the months to come. Expansion of third-party. Last year, we did expand our contract with Bureau Veritas to, for plan review, turnkey plan review and inspections for six subdivisions that kind of on the edge of town, again, to supplement our inspector services, not only when we have vacancies like we do right now, but even when we are fully staffed. It will help our, to provide some, some space for our inspectors to spend more time with customers, so they're not having to rush through their days just to hit their numbers. You can see how we've ramped up. BEB has ramped up since last October. We were under two hundred inspections a month, and in April, we were almost to a thousand. So they're doing approximately nineteen percent of our inspections. That has helped fill the void for those two open positions. And you can see the correlation from our next-day inspections KPI, going from eighty-seven percent up to ninety-four. Another, some other plan review efforts that we've been working on, we just implemented a self-certification process for electrical plan review. So if the electrical engineer of record for the project, we have a form they sign, and the owner signs it, they can bypass the city's review completely, and we will permit it based on that certification from the electrical engineer. We've had, we've had several groups use this, and then we just inspect to those, those plans that are, you know, certified by the engineer. We've also increased our third-party reviewer contracts to have a better backstop when we have staffing issues. We've added a coefficient engineering in BNT code solutions. And you can see, and actually, this, this slide, that this is electrical plan reviews that were past due. We went to, from about seventy, this was, as of five-nine, we were down to less than ten. And actually, I checked this morning, and we're completely caught up. So we'll be able to use coefficient BNT code solutions in Bureau Veritas as a backstop, so we don't get behind anymore moving forward. So excited about having them onboard. Some planned ordinance updates that should help improve some licensing and enforcement processes and be more efficient, not only for staff, but for our customers. We have some, several ordinances that are a little out of date, that we need to update, including our amusement ordinances, the coin operating machines, alcohol, and then some of our nuisance ordinances on the code side. We're also looking, or actually, this month, Plan Commission will be reviewing some changes to our subdivision ordinance that will help with our preliminary plat approval process. And then also, we, a couple of years ago, we went from half-acre lot minimum to acre lot minimum for septic systems. And one of the requirements of plats is that you do a suitability study to determine if the lot is suitable for whatever type system they're using on lot. Well, now that we're up to an acre, there's really not a good reason to have that suitability study done at the plating level. So we're amending our ordinance to move that from plating to the actual permitting of the system. So that, that should help for our customers to move through the process more quickly. And some of these ordinance amendments, we'll be bringing back to you in August to introduce those, getting more detail on them. And then public outreach, we have, we're on our second year of our Develop Waco newsletter, which has been really successful. We're almost to, up to three thousand subscriptions. And I've been told by the Comms Department that we have really good open and click rates. Don't know exactly what that means, but people are actually reading the newsletters, I think that's what that means.
Sounds good.
Yeah, sounds good, sounds good.
We also have our monthly and quarterly stakeholder group meetings. We meet with the AGC and the home builders on a quarterly standpoint. And then we have a monthly developers' meeting that we host at the city, where we bounce ideas off, get feedback from, and then just talk shop with those on things that are happening. We've had some trade workshops with different, the trades, whether it be electrical, plumbing, mechanical. With the new SolarApp, we'll have a workshop coming up soon on the use of SolarApp. And then we've leaned into pre-construction and coordination meetings on larger projects just to make sure we're on the same page with them, and that, you know, as, as we start the plan review process and the inspection process, that we are all on the same page with the design professionals and contractors. And then our, one of our latest initiatives, we just went live with a customer satisfaction survey that's now up and running on our website, which is kind of the Phase One of what we're wanting to do with this, to get feedback from our customers. We will, we are looking at a Phase Two to include this in all our communication efforts, whether it be through permits or inspections, email, we'll have the capability of getting customer feedback on that. And then we're working to create some KPIs based on the customer service surveys that we get. So we're excited about this. Feel free to jump on there and fill it out if you want to give some feedback to us. And then some coming soon, as we talked about earlier with the study, we need checklist on everything, again, to have that predictability. We need to tell people exactly what our expectations are for every single one of our processes. So that's one of the things that we'll be working on over the next several months, is to go through every single one of our processes and have checklist for that, and put that out on our website and in our communication efforts. And the goal is to have that at both English and in Spanish, and that all accessible. And then finally, adoption of new building codes and electrical codes. With our reorganization, we've created some bandwidth for our building official, Chris Valtierra, to start working on the adoption of I codes. We're currently under 2018 I codes, international codes, and the 2020 National Electric Code. We do want to adopt the 2024 I codes and the 2023 NEC. The 23 NEC is already mandated by state law, so we actually need to come into compliance with what state law requires. And then the adoption of the current IBC is really important to our ISO-1 rating that we currently have. We want to keep that, and this is a component of that. We'll be working through our Advisory Appeal Board to make recommendations for adoption of those in fall of 2025, so you'll be seeing that later this year. And then to recap, our permitting trends are holding steady, are ticking up positive numbers. Our department reorg is complete, Phase One of that is complete and in place. We are working feverishly on updating improvement efforts that we talked through, and looking forward to, you know, an update, you know, in the next six to nine months with what I'm predicting to see even better results with our KPIs. And then we do have upcoming adoption of our IBC and NEC later this year. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or comments.
Any comments for Clint?
Thank you, Clint. This was quite a comprehensive and thorough presentation on a great deal of updates and improvement efforts. improvement efforts for us here today. And I know, I'm sure my other city council members also receive input from business owners and residents and others that go through development services and are seeking inspections or permits or approvals. And so I'm glad to see that those KPIs are trending in the right direction. It seems like a lot of the improvements that you're making are already seeing some, some great effects. I'd heard from a number of folks, friends and constituents and others on solar, so I'm glad to hear that we've got that solar app coming online. And it sounds like the review process is being streamlined and you've got dedicated folks on both intake and inspections that will be able to address some of the challenges from the past that I think both businesses and residents have had. So are, do you feel like you're receiving some positive feedback already from those going through? I know a lot of these have yet to be implemented or in the process of it, but what's the type of feedback you're getting so far?
Yeah, I think so, especially with some of our larger stakeholders, they're seeing it. You know, our ultimate goal is it gets down into the, a customer that we only deal with on occasion.
Yeah.
That doesn't really know how to navigate the process.
That's right, yeah.
And so, but I think, you know, some of the frequent, heavy users are seeing that aren't giving good feedback.
Glad to hear it.
Yeah, Clint, I'll just say that I had two people compliment your department and that's, that's saying something. It's really nice. And based on your KPIs, that's not just an accident. And I think what struck me in, in that is that, you know, it's one thing to control what your people do, but you're relying also on input from third parties and that's harder to control. So I think that's, that's a compliment to you and your group.
Thank you. Yeah, Clint, I appreciate the presentation and it is a monumental task when you look at a city that's grown like ours is and a city that has the small business economy that ours does, things that are constantly changing and turning, and most of it revolves or pivots around your department in terms of the growth that we see. So I applaud you for, you know, sort of spearheading as we move forward, all of the different initiatives that you laid out. I had, I had a question yesterday and I'll ask it today. If you could pinpoint one thing, be it the new assistant director positions or the strategic initiative positions or just additional staff or any of the new technologies looking to implement, what do you think will move the needle the most in terms of the efficiencies that we're looking for?
I'm, I'm excited about all of it. I would say I've been super excited about the reorg. It's not often that you get to do kind of an extreme makeover of your department. So, and, and the support we've had from city manager's office on that and putting, we have great employees and a great group of talent there. It's just that our, our system wouldn't, you know, it wasn't supporting the way they needed to. So that's, that's really what the excitement I have is that we've been able to put people in the positions where, that match their strengths and give them the support that they need to do their jobs to the level that they can do it at. So that, I would say that's probably what I'm excited about the most.
Awesome. Love to hear that. Yeah, I'm looking forward to hearing back from you in like six, like you said, six to nine months to see where we're at at that point. It seems like we're moving everything in the right direction. So thank you for today.
I think I'm going to say something. Clint, I want to congratulate you for reorganizing your department and staying within your allocated FTEs. That's really hard when trying to see the vision and making it work. And not only that, but building the leadership pipeline within your department. That's powerful. That, Waco has talent and we want to promote that. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Yeah, great presentation, Clint. I'll just add to this, I might've said this before, I was at a mayor's conference in DC earlier this year and as I was talking to people, we always said, what city processes and services are the most challenging? And it's universal. I mean, it's code enforcement permitting and inspections and nobody can quite land on the right because it moves so fast and it changes so fast, nobody can quite land on the right software and the process. But I, I really applaud and commend you for being committed to best-in-class customer service because that's what we're all about here. You're looking at the systems, the processes, the key performance indicators, you're looking at staffing levels and bandwidth and efficiency, as you point out, isn't always about, you know, I'm going to cut four people. That is, that's not what efficiency about, or customer service. We're trying to make your people, I think we need to add some folks here and make the people more effective within the, within the, the systems that we have and utilizing the people that we have. As you say, I think we've got great people who are just kind of reassigning and modifying and expanding and their roles. So you're looking at it exactly the right way and it'll all point to better customer service and the numbers are already showing it. Super impressed with the, this new software we're putting in, the main star permitting software, the V specs, virtual inspection software. You've got some great, a great user group there, some pretty heavy hitters with graphic packaging and electrolyte and RO and Masonic. I mean, that's brilliant to put those guys in there to test the system out. And the Veritas third-party services, which I think we're, we're seeing some movement to that, maybe legislatively, we may be seeing some movement there as well and how we incorporate, that's a whole other issue. But, and then looking at the ordinance updates, I hadn't really even thought about that. Maybe simplifying them to fit into our, our processes better. And then most importantly, and you guys are on top of it on the public outreach, where the only way we're going to get better is to hear that feedback. And I'm glad to see that maybe the ship has turned a little bit where we're getting good positive feedback because we're going to continue to grow as we're all seeing and saying up here. And again, I just want to say, I appreciate your commitment to, to public service on this challenging process that every city is dealing with. You know, you're not by yourself by any means. And I just like the fact that we're being very proactive about it and intentional about getting this going. So congrats, look forward to other key performance indicator data. I love it. Thanks, Clint.
Thank you.
The last item is work session 2025-333, discussion of planning public hearing agenda items. City manager Ford?
We're going to keep Clint Peters down here. He hadn't had enough time at the mic, so we're going to have him give the overview of the planning public hearing items. I think he's only going to cover a couple of them though, two or three, and then we'll take our break, so.
Thank you, Bradley. Yes, we got seven public hearings tonight, six zoning cases and then one annexation. I wanted to go into depth on two of them. The other five are dealing with, three of them are, are special permit, either renewals or existing special permits. They're all recommended for approval. And then the other two zoning cases are cases that involve zoning from commercial to either residential or mixed-use office zoning. So the two I did want to cover in depth are 343. This is a request from, for a change from R1B zoning to a concept PUD on a little under 11 acres in our Timbercrest neighborhood out off Loop 340 near Kendall Lane. This is, you can see the property here, it's right next to the Union Baptist Association Building and then close to Buena Vista Park here. Zoom out a little bit, this is the overall Timbercrest neighborhood. It's about 300 acres, mainly developed out, larger lot, single family. You can see this is one of the last kind of pieces of that that hasn't developed. Currently, the zoning is single family and the developer is requesting that it be zoned at PUD. The, the PUD, the purpose of the PUD is to, is for 40-foot lots to increase the density. Still single-family development, but from a 50-foot, our minimum lot size in R1B is 6,000 square feet and 50-foot wide and they're requesting to go to 40 feet in width. They would have a couple of roads extending through the property from Loop 340 over to Hermosa Drive, which is a stubout road, and then a cul-de-sac here. Here's a comparison of the, what's allowed under current zoning and what's being proposed in the PUD. Current density is a little over five, four, four and a half units per acre with the proposal would be about 5.9 units an acre. You can see the minimum lot width in R1B is 50 feet. They're proposing a little over 40 feet per lot. And then lot area, 6,000 square feet compared to about 4,800 square feet. They are requesting some reduced setbacks, the front and rear, and then the building areas for the lots reduced down from about 3,600 square feet to about 2,700 feet per lot. Ultimately, it's about 14 units. We're talking about difference, 49 units would yield the existing R1B zoning up to 63 with the proposed PUD. So design standards, so this would be a concept PUD. This, this is a rendering of what they're proposing for their homes. One of the things that is required, and this is regardless of whether it's single-family or PUD, is they have to meet our design, our residential design standards ordinance. And those require building architectural features on the homes, parking requirements for parking standards for either driveways or garages and then fronts, facade variations. I would say some of their renderings do not meet our current standards, so that is one of the conditions of our recommendation, Plan Commission recommendation, is that they would need to update their design of their homes to meet that standard. I'll point out that the, the big one that you can see in this photo is that our design standards require that the garage take up no more than 50% of the front facade of the building. And you can see from this rendering that that probably is more than 50%. So they'll have to redesign their buildings. Some of the other residential design standards are facade variations. So we have a, currently have a requirement that you have to alter or vary the design of the front facades in a six-lot pattern here or two lots on either side. So each one of these facades in that group would have to be varied and you have to be considered varied, you have to have three different facade elements. And those could include a laundry list of things, doing roofline, roof pitches, porches, dormers, materials, number of windows, increased landscaping. So you have to have three alterations for each one of those in that pattern. So that's something they'll need to show as well in the final PUD if approved. Here's the, the site, this is looking from Hermosa where it stubs out, that would connect into the subdivision. And this is looking back, it's, it's really close to Buena Vista Park. Plan Commission did recommend approval by six, six to one vote with several conditions, including what we're talking about with the design standards. And then one of the other things that we looked at, you know, typically with new subdivisions, you would have an amenity area and then originally, they did include one in the detention pond area, if you go back and look at their site plan, they did show a small walking area there. But we, we felt like, and the Plan Commission felt like it would be better suited for the residents of that subdivision to be connected to Buena Vista Park. It's, it's got the amenities, it's a great neighborhood park. So instead of requiring internal amenities to the subdivision, there's a requirement to extend the sidewalk through the subdivision to tie in to the, the walking path to Buena Vista. It's about 600 feet of sidewalk that would be offsite to tie in to the, to the Buena Vista Park. So you can get from the subdivision to the park, walking on, on a sidewalk. We did have, there was one card submitted, Plan Commission from adjacent neighbor that had concerns, well, the concerns about development, they, in general, they just like to see the property left vacant. But no other comments at the Plan Commission hearing?
Oh, have you talked to the developer about our, our design standards and have they made comment? Because I, I personally, and as this is a new development in the district, in my district, I don't have any problem with the smaller lot size. I don't like the way the houses look. It's not even comparable to what is in South Fork, which is another StyleCraft property that is its neighbor. And so I just need them to, to be comparable in some way. I mean, there are many ways to do small lot homes, but that don't necessarily look like that.
So we have talked to the developer, you're correct, so that the, the plan is to sell these lots to StyleCraft and so we will need to work with StyleCraft to get their, their plan set, offering for their homes to, to meet our residential design standards with the final PUD submitted. So you will, that will have to go back through a public process, so you'll be able to see that.
Is it easier for the question, I mean, because I know that you're asking us to vote for the PUD tonight and there will have to be a final PUD presented that we will also vote for, but should we vote on that today or should we wait and see what the developer says before we move forward? I'm looking at you, city manager. Or, or city attorney?
I really, Kristen Hamilton-Carron for the record, I really, that's council's decision. If you want to continue the hearing, you can leave the hearing open today and continue it to a date certain. If you wanted to, you know, provide an opportunity for the developer to make an assurance that they would provide those standards.
Do we believe that they can have that information by the June meeting?
The second reading?
Uh huh. Well, the, no.
The first meeting?
The first meeting in June. Do we think that we could have those questions answered by that time or no?
We can check with them and see before.
Okay. If not, the, I just don't, like I said, the, the issues are, are not the size for me. It is, it, I, I don't, it's feeling a little reminiscent to another development that we had, that we had to change our building standards codes for and I don't like that. And so I would rather us be sure before we make decisions. So I, I personally would ask for a continuance. I don't, I'm, I'm open to hearing from my other colleagues.
Yeah, I, I think I'm in alignment with you there. I know, I don't think we're moving for that right now, but until the business session.
Sure.
But yeah, I'm all for 40-foot lots and, and, you know, higher density housing. I think you need to be creative and intentional and strategic when you do so. There's no rear vehicle access or alleyways or rear-loading, rear-loaded housing here, which is something I, I think I'd like to see a mix of that with the, the front loaded as well. Additionally, when you do a lot of high-density housing in a, a small year like this, Clint, I know you're aware of this, it creates a lot of runoff and drainage issues. So I'd, you know, yeah, wanting to have a, and just a lot more impermeable surface in a small place, so wanting to have a good plan for that. And then the, the setbacks were, were at 20 feet there, which would make it tough to, to park a, a truck in the driveway without overhanging onto the sidewalk. So with, for all of those reasons, if, if the developers, you know, amenable to, to working with, putting together a more viable request, at that point, I'd be more than willing to, to move forward with the approved change here. But until then, I'm in agreement with Mayor Proton Barfield.
Yeah, I think all that makes sense, we'll talk more about it tonight, but, and I like your creativity, Clint, about trying to figure out how to, the density and the, and the not having green space, but have a green space right next door so there's no use and leveling up. So I like the direction it's going.
Get more information for the park because it's an amazing park.
Exactly. And it's in a great location and everything, so. But yeah, that design stands where we don't even have kind of a picture of what we think it might look like, at least maybe at that next meeting, we'll, we'll decide tonight, but good report.
And then the, the last case I wanted to highlight is annexation. And then the, the last case I wanted to highlight is an annexation, Public Hearing three forty-four. This is a, it's a small annexation. It's a, a small piece of the new Waco Gateway project that's developing on the edge of our city limits that will be mixed-use, heavy on industrial, but also some multifamily and commercial with a, a connection of Gateway Boulevard that will connect into the underpass I thirty-five there. There is a small piece of the Gateway Boulevard extension that's actually outside of our city limits. So this is an annexation for that small piece, which is about an acre and a half in size. See a picture of it there. And Plan Commission did recommend approval of not only the annexation, but M two zoning and industrial and use to go along with that. That's our report.
And I don't want to comment one way or the other, how I may vote, but I'm usually in favor of territorial expansion of District Three. So I look favorably on the ground we've gained in the last several years.
For two acres.
Unfortunately, there'll be no voters in that area because it'll be right away.
Even better.
Unless you're standing in the middle of the road.
Right.
Okay. Well, is there any other questions on these or any other plan or public hearing items for Clint, at least right now?
No, kudos to Clint for going for what seems like, you know, was it 30, 30 straight minutes or something on that between the two presentations?
It's probably all those times we bump into.
Yeah.
I think I've used up all my words for the.
I know.
All right, Bradley, that's it, right? That's all the work session items. We will now move to the future agenda items. Are there any requests for future agenda items? There being none, we will now adjourn the work session and we'll reconvene for the business session at 6:00 P M. We will not have an executive session today.